Our rules for tonight are, and I think everyone here is civilized enough, but we're not going to tolerate any kind of personal attack. We would ask that your questions be directed so that every one of the candidates has a chance to answer particular questions. If we get to the point where the same person keeps getting different questions, it's going to take a lot of time. And all respect to the candidates, turn these off or mute them if you would. We don't need any crazy ringtones in the middle. Was there anybody else that didn't get a card that wants to put a question down? And again, on the questions, your school board isn't going to be able to answer how the handout of the Russian President Putin on the issue of troop buildup in Syria, so please hold those questions for someone else. I need some questions. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself. The format is you have two minutes for an opening statement each one of you. Our timekeeper down in the front row has a 15-second warning and a 30-second warning. You have two minutes for your opening. We're going to allow two minutes to answer each question, and then you'll have a one-minute closing statement at the end. Is everybody fine with that? Great. We'll start with Mr. Tran. We'll just go right down the row here. You can, if you can take the microphone out of the... Can you help us close this?
Everybody ready?
Yes.
My name is Tom Tran. I have been the resident of Westchester Township for the last 60 years. I have two children, one already graduated from Lakota West and another one who is a junior currently. I understand that, you know, I was expecting to have a lot more turnout tonight, but I guess most people have just been so I can understand that. Or even though, you know, when we go to the school function, we see a lot of parents, so I guess everybody's busy. I thought that there would be a lot more parents out there or the members of the district run for the school board because this is an important position to make sure that we can get our children to be successful in the future. But I guess that's only for us, so I'm good there. And what I want to do is, I had thought about the school, being president of the school board for quite a number of years, but because of the work situation, I can't do that. But since now I live in Boyden, I started a company that coexists, so I can have more time to look into the school situation. As a member of the board, I have four things that I would like to accomplish for the next four years. First one is fiscal responsibility. The second one is building awareness. The third one is to get more parents enrolled. And the last one is to obtain and retain quality teachers. And I know that sounds naive, but since now I only plan to work for one term. And since I've been doing it for four years, I'm going to do the best I can to worry about a parting side of it. And we're thinking of the four issues that I'm planning. I think that the most important one is the fiscal responsibility. And that is my main concern for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Tran. Julie Ferguson? I'm sorry, Julie's here. I know Julie Ferguson, why would I keep it?
All right. I'm Julie Shaffer. I'm a resident of Westchester as well. My husband and I have three children who are in Lakota currently. We have a 12th, 9th, and 3rd grader. This offers me a view sometimes when our policies and the way we do things look great on paper and then don't work quite as well in action. It gives me a viewpoint so I can see things from the parent's perspective. My background, I spent over 20 years in employee benefits and finance field. When I joined the board, I've already done limited consulting in that area since that time. Student, the focus for me is all about student achievement and student success. And I think that goes from in the classroom to beyond the classroom, and that's really my focus in all the decisions I make and what is best for the kids of this district. What we've accomplished since I've joined the board is, I feel like, a pretty impressive record, so I'd like to share some of those things with you. We put in place a strategic plan, and that strategic plan was done with community input, not only through community conversations, but we had a broad group of concerned residents that were both community members. We had staff, we had students, so we could get a broad perspective in developing that strategic plan. And then that's helped us set the direction from there. We've also created a balanced budget. We're actually spending less this year than we did the year that I joined the board four years ago. Without any adjustments from place or anything, the actual dollars spent are less than when I joined the board four years ago. Everything that we do has a very strategic approach and is data-driven. When we look at what, when we put a levy in, we made it very clear what we're going to invest that money in, and we followed through with those promises that we made through technology, through security. We've increased specials, we've increased transportation, and I hope to continue that record and continue its success that we've seen within the last four years. Thank you.
Next, we're going to hear from Ernest.
My name is Ernest Gaus. I live in Lepin. My name is Ernest Gaus. I live in Lepin, Georgia for the past five years. I'm a head job professor for the past 25 years. I've spent over 20 years in corporate HR. My background is in education and I have a master's degree in business and a master's degree in technology. I've also did consulting work with Cincinnati State, Cincinnati Public Schools. I've also did consulting work with Woods. For me, it is that my goal for when I'm a member of this board is really to educate the next generation of leaders because that's where our key responsibility is. One of the things that I want to see is, is that I want to see that bridge between what we do here in Lakota to what we do in the business sector and what we do in universities because I think that we need to build that relationship. And I think we need to be innovative before we're thinking about how we do that. It is that we need to reach out to the doctor again, we need to reach out to the UCs, we need to reach out to Ohio State and see where they're actually building to invest more into our school system and really sort of create that pipeline. Because what we're building is key talent, and we want 45,000 communities specifically wanting to come to Lakota to get my key talent. We want to be the destination of choice for when people move into this community. They're looking at the Lakota school system instead of Mason or War or Hamilton because we want to be the destination of choice. And the way that we do that is through innovation, how we look at education. And I'm also looking at building those partnerships in education to bring the resources that we need necessarily to be successful as a district.
Lynda O'Connor.
Good evening. I'm Lynda O'Connor. I grew up the daughter of two Salvation Army ministers, and education as a whole and service were emphasized in my home. It was those priorities that led me to earning a master's of education in special education. I have a family of four. My husband Doug Terry, who has 33 years of marriage, is a 21-year Air Force pilot veteran. He's currently an instructor pilot for Delta Airlines, and his work brought us to Westchester 24 years ago. Both our sons have graduated from Lakota West. We're proud to say that they both enrolled in the honor scholars program at the Ohio State University. Our oldest is currently serving in the Ohio National Guard, and our youngest is now beginning his college career as a Buckeye. My involvement with the district began many, many years ago as a kindergarten girl, and I've been deeply involved in the district since that time. I'm humbled to say that voters have twice elected me to the Lakota School Board, and I've served on almost every position that we have. I've been privileged to hold both executive officer positions. My two terms on the board have been both challenging and gratifying. My concerns will center, as always, on the foundation of a strong community: families, residents, businesses, and an academic system that's necessary to provide individuals with the skills to be a contributing member to our community and businesses with educated graduates. I serve in leadership roles throughout the community in Partners in Prime, Westchester Liberty Chamber Alliance, Boys Scouts of America, the Faith Alliance, the Carrying Community Collaborative, and many other organizations. I believe that a community is strongest when all the sectors are working together. I believe that our nation's future depends on the strength of our educational system, and with your support, I'll continue to advocate for the highest quality education that every taxpayer has a right to demand, every student deserves, and that the future of our community, our state, and our nation depends on. Thank you.
Thanks to all of you. I'm trying to speed read some of these questions. Is there anyone here from the Journal News tonight? I say that because 10 years ago, I ran for Lakota School Board, and I didn't make it. And for the next eight years, every time my name was mentioned in the paper, I had the honor of being the failed school board candidate. They finally gave that up, and I appreciate that. I draw to cover. I believe this question would pertain to you all. The Lakota School Board District has had an excellent with distinction rating from the state for a long time. Do you feel our schools are adequately funded, and what would you do to ensure the schools get the money they need to keep the highest distinct rating? And I guess we'll switch things up. We'll start with Lynda and work our way down.
Question 4.
Says, "The Lakota School District has had an excellent with distinction rating from the state for a long time. Do you feel our schools are adequately funded, and what would you do to ensure the schools get the money they need to keep the highest state rating?"
Thank you. I'm sure that all of you are aware of the recent news with the Miami budget that the governor proposed at the beginning of the year, which was to, actually, Lakota was going to be the largest loser in the state. We were scheduled to live this between tangible personal property reimbursement loss and state funding itself, 9.7 million. The board and the district went to work. We started advocating very strongly at the state level. We asked our community for their help and their support. Over 1,000 letters were received in Columbus advocating for our school district. And that was sent not just to our legislators, but to the regional legislators as well. And Lakota was heard. As a result, although we did take a veto, a governor's veto cut, we did lose $3 million in funding, but we didn't lose what we would have lost. Legislative advocacy made a tremendous difference in that. I think we have to stay on top of school and state funding. We need to be very aware of economic development within our area, how that impacts us, local funding changes with tax and revenue. We have to also be very strategic in our allocation of resources. We've taken a different approach to how we look at resources now. We take the time to say, is this a position we really need? Do we need these dollars or this staff person? Perhaps focused in a different direction. I think this is actually a key question, and I really appreciate that we were asked that question because we've changed the way that we're doing business.
I think one of the things that we need to do is in a couple areas. I think one of the things that, even though we have an excellent rating with distinction, I think there needs to be more investment to technology and in the classroom. Because as I said in the introduction, we're educating the next generation of leaders, and the way you educate the next generation of leaders is by being innovative in the classroom, introducing technology. Currently, right now, Lakota is not at a one-to-one ratio in the classrooms, but Cincinnati Public School is. So even though we have a higher rating, we're doing innovative things in the classroom. That's what we need to do. And I think we also need to look at the curriculum and how we move the curriculum forward. But even from a cost perspective, is that I think we need to control our costs because if you look at the budget that has been forecasted, May 26, 2015, expenses are continuously increasing, and by 2019, we'll be at a net loss of $4 million. So even though the school districts are putting cost controls in place, expenses are steadily increasing across the board. Busing costs is increasing, salaries are actually increasing. Between the actual 2014 and the forecast in 2015, there's a $2.1 million increase in payroll. The other challenge that I think that we have is executive comp. And one of the things I did is do an audit of executive compensation within the Lakota School District. Between 2013, 2014, and 2015, there's been a double-digit increase in executive salary within the Lakota School System. So when you look at directors, when you look at assistants, and if we look at principals, is that there's no reason why executive comp should go up 50% in a three-year time period. So there needs to be more control of the cost in order to make the school district fiscally viable. So those are the things that I would look at, and that the district can continue to be viable.
I'd like to build on some of the things Lynda stated. She already shared many of the things that the district that we have done in order to contain costs and also to make sure our funding lasts as long as it can. In addition, those of you who added levy, that the community agreed to invest in our schools, we made it very clear what the community was investing in, and that was technology, which was a important component. It's been suggested that we should do a one-to-one ratio of technology. We felt, given the resources that many of our students have, they already have that technology at hand. So instead of paying for devices that may break that are going to continually have to be replaced, we chose to only provide resources in technology for those who couldn't bring their own devices. We opened up a policy where our students could bring their own devices so that we could save money as a district while still allowing technology to be used in every classroom, which we also agree is a important component. And that's what we continue to focus on and what our technology plan continues to build on. We continue to look for ways to cut costs. This year with our health insurance plan, we switched from the Butler County Health Consortium two years ago. This year, we're actually seeing a decrease in our health premiums. We also have a cap next year. So we're continuing to look for different ways that we can contain all of our costs to allow for funding to extend and make up for some of the losses received at the state level.
Like anything else in life, if you want something good, you have to pay for it. So now the question is, how much will you pay for? So if we look at our school budget, $125 million a year, all right? And the, and the school district have been trying to cut that off to make it more efficient to bring down the cost of. Now, is any waste there? Of course, there's always something, some waste in there. So one of my proposals was that, I had a talk at the beginning, was fiscal responsibility. As a school board member, I will go through the budget with the threshold of the school district, and by, not January, but by March, I will have a report to you what all the expenses, the revenue from the school district. Now, I know that people said, well, you know, the budget is available out there. Yes, that's true, but it's not sent directly to you, the people in the district. And that's a promise for me, once we get, if I'm, when I'm elected, those information will be sent to you. I want to make sure there's transparency in the whole situation with fiscal responsibility. Now, I will find ways how to make it more efficient, right? We look at different ways. We look at labor costs, we look at maintenance costs, we look at building costs, and everything else involved there. Of course, let me be honest about, all of us, we're not expert in everything. So that's why we have people coming in and work with us. But at least you will have all the information out there so you can make your own mind wise and just decision of how our school district is going to be. And like I said before, the cost money is to make something good. So the only way we can do it, with the support of all of you and to back me up, I will make it happen. Thank you.
This next question, we'll start with Ernest to go this way, and then Lynda. This question was written as a four-parter, but it's all under one heading. So I'll let you, I'll let you answer it the best way possible. The overlying question is, how do you feel about Common Core? And the questions that they're looking to get answered is, what has it done to the system? What is left out of the textbooks? How does it, I'm sorry, how does it help the children to prepare for the future? And how much has it cost to implement, and what have we got for it? And I'm sorry, you don't have 20 minutes each. Just do the best you can. 30 seconds for the question. Yes, Ernest, you're up first.
With Common Core, what has it done? I think Common Core for the Lakota School District, my first look at it, has been a challenge because the Common Core standards are written sort of vague, so each individual school system sort of makes it to what they feel will be beneficial to their own school district. I think it needs a little bit more structure and a little bit more standards so people know what they need to be developing, what they need to be working toward. I think for the Lakota School District is that, do I think it's incredibly beneficial? Do I do not? Because I don't think there's no structure to build around it. What is left out? But that's sort of the challenge of Common Core because nothing is left out and nothing is put in because each individual district has to figure out what that is. So when you look at the amount of time and resources that you have to put in and say, what does the Common Core mean to us? Well, it's an enigma wrapped within an enigma because each district has to figure out for itself. So what Common Core means in a Lakota School District may be different from the Cincinnati School District, which may be different from the Forest Park District. And so the challenge is, is that people don't know how to truly implement it correctly, and how does it help? I think that Lakota does an excellent job. I think they can do an even better job doing some of the things that they're continuing to do without sort of overarching perspective of the Common Core. Because we're a school district that's been created excellent with distinction, so we have the skills, the tools, and the resources to get the job done. So for us, we already have that ability, and so we don't need to sort of go out and get this external model and bring it into the school district and sort of reinvent what we're currently doing. And how much does it cost to implement? There's not a line item in the budget, ladies and gentlemen, so it's kind of hard to say what the tangible fiscal dollars are actually going to be. But as a board member, that's one of the things I'm going to be looking at, is what does it cost to implement some of these initiatives? What is it benefit and what is the cost? And then putting some controls to make sure that we are getting the best dollar for our community. Thank you.
I think the Common Core and its desire, when the governors first met, to have harder, rigor, and more hands-on learning could have great benefit for the students. I think what then happened is the testing model took over, and local control was lost, and that became a challenge. And so, while Mr. Gaus has mentioned that it didn't have enough structure, I would argue in some ways, it felt to me that while we are charged with implementing the curriculum, that curriculum was largely determined for us, and that becomes a challenge as a local school board when some of that local control is taken away in the form of Common Core. I think the testing, the state is starting to take measures to look at the testing, to redo testing. They're limiting the testing next year, and again, our curriculum person has gone up to the state with our superintendent and made a great deal of effort to change and limit the amount of testing from two periods to one, to reduce the time in testing significantly so that our students would have more time to learn and less time that has to be spent on testing. And the positive benefit, we constantly are investing in staff development. This is becoming the latest way we have to invest in staff development to make sure that they are up to speed because these are the metrics that our students and our teachers are getting measured against. So there has been investment in the millions, really, because of having to do all the professional development, but it's hard to say how much of that would have to be happening anyway. So a piece of that professional development would be happening regardless. And I think it's always good to look at new ways of doing things, looking at new ways of teaching, so I think there have been some more hands-on pieces that have really benefited our students, but I think the testing piece has really created a bigger challenge.
Well, you're probably going to be surprised, I'm against Common Core. Well, most of us here have probably graduated in high school by the 70s, maybe some 60s or probably in the 80s. Now, do you think, when you went into school, was it the kids now? Are you less successful than they are today? Did you have Common Core then? Of course not. I didn't have Common Core. So I think, first of all, I think it's a waste of money. It puts stress in the school district. It makes the teachers, what, instead of teaching, they're preparing for the test, so they take less time from teaching the children. And look at it, every teacher in the class knows who the widget links in the class, the witch theory that they have. And they can, that's using that type of money to help the individual students, to make them be interested in what you want them to like. Now, if you look at, you look at all of us here, we, you know, you work, and you have training, and you go to the training and say, man, I don't want to be here. You don't have interest in that, of course, you're not learning anymore. You don't want to hear about what it is. The key thing for us is to find out what our kids want. One kid can have interest of this, the different kid may have some other interest. Common Core tests, that's what, it kind of averages out everything. So some kid may not be interested, that's not what he wants to do. All he wants to do is to draw, and he could be the best painter in the planet, but of course, he's not going to do well on Common Core because all the test aspects, it's not having to do with what he wants in life. What we want to do is, we want to inspire these kids to be the best what they can do. They can do want to be a garbage man, let them be the best of the garbage man out there. Not everybody will be doctors, not everybody, I don't want to be a lawyer, doctors or educators, right? So you look realistically. I, one last thing I want to say is, I'm against Common Core. I will fight if I'm a member of the school board.
I.D.S. here, please, hold your applause till the very end. Just respect everyone, please.
Well, that was made of the Donald Trump moment, this would be it. I don't like it. It's a cookie cutter approach. It assumes that all children learn the same. It doesn't allow our teachers to teach, and that's what they're there for. Our teachers are then given training and tools and resources and experience and knowledge to help each child where they're at, and that's what I'd like them to be able to do. What I saw happen last year at the state level, I think, as Julie indicated, there were several issues that actually complicated the implementation. And it goes toward what happened in the system as a result of Common Core. The rapidity of change that happened last year with the third grade reading guarantee, with the new teacher evaluation system, and with Common Core all being implemented at the same time, made it very difficult for our teachers. It was too much change without enough support at the state level. I don't like the loss of control in Common Core. I think the issues of implementation in Ohio, by the way, the cost of implementation in Ohio was $26 million, and we've changed it. Now we're going to something different. So the issue of implementation was complicated by technology glitches, lack of technology, too much testing, and negative impact on instructional time, and that was the very worst part about it. State legislators have moved us to a new system. Part will not be used, which is a new testing system, we'll be moving to a new one by the company that actually created the social studies and the science system, and that is the AIR. And I expect to see that it will be a little bit better than what we had last year. I believe in Ohio standards for our Ohio children, and I really like the thought that we'll be implementing students' standards set up by our own state.
Thank you. This next question, we'll start with Julie, if you'll be able to read, return it back to the end. Lakota is always saying there's not enough money to do all they want to do. When the last levy was passed, it was promised that it would be used for the students. Now you want to spend one-half million dollars to tear down the union school when over a billion was spent to revive it, revive the school, plus against historical value. Do you agree with this, and if so, how does this benefit Lakota school children?
When we had our community conversations, it became very clear that people want not just the academic piece, but the whole child piece to be looked at for all of our kids. How can we grow our children to be good citizens in the world? When we were approached by the Boys and Girls Club about a partnership with a property that was a union, union at that point had been looked at by both the Ohio Schools Facility Commission as well as the local architect to see if it was a viable building to be used in the future. And both of those organizations told us that this was not a building that could be used for our school purposes in the future. So what we did is, when we looked at partnering with the Boys and Girls Club, they could come in, they would share the cost of demolition. That would, in the long term, save us the maintenance costs that we were paying every year in order to have the building stay in a state that it wasn't a eyesore or a problem in Westchester. Westchester. And it would allow us to grow our students while using private donations to grow those students and enrich their lives without having to go to the taxpayers for those additional programs and supports. So we actually thought that it was a very innovative program that would allow a public-private partnership that could take these students a great deal further while still not requiring taxpayer money, other than a partial investment in that demolition while saving us the cost of maintenance every year. So I do think that it was an investment that is worth it and going to have a benefit in the long term while still allowing us to retain that land should we need it in the future to expand some operation that there's a mandate that comes down from the state. We still have that asset as a Lakota asset to use in the future.
Want to straight talk? I'm not familiar with the issue. I mean, I've read about it, but I'm not familiar with this issue, this issue about the benefit versus the cost of. But as a member, when I'm elected, I will take a look at this thing. And if we make a mistake, and if it's not a good deal, I'm going to tell you, hey, we made a mistake, it's not a good deal, let's cut the cost. Business, if a project doesn't go well, you cut the loss and go on. Admit the loss, admit the mistake, and go on. That's all I can tell you. Thank you.
The board recognizes that there is a lot of significant emotional attachment to this building. We have families go through there, from students that go through there that have all those kind of memories that are wrapped up in our, in our school memories. And we recognize that. And the Boys and Girls Club has actually pledged that they will take that into account. And there'll be some history in the Boys and Girls Club if that option is actually actualized. The truth is, frankly, and with all due respect to one of our previous board members who's in the audience, the truth is you have to live with the hand that you're dealt and the decisions of boards that have come before you. And when that previous board received information that rehabilitation of the building to make it ADA compliant and to deal with other significant issues in the building was going to cost a minimum of $10 million, they decided that a new building was economically more feasible at $11 million. It was an economic decision. They let the building stand because at that point in time, there was a group that was interested in leasing the property. That isn't the case now. At the time that the board made this decision last year, there were four public board meetings and two community conversations. And there were several options put in part of the community at that point in time. We listened closely to what was said, and we ended up deciding on the option that the community said that we think this is the best out of the plans that we presented to us. And that is the plan that's in front of you now. The option is in place, the contract is in place until June of next year. At that point, if the contract is not actualized, we'll have to look at other options. And that's wide open, as long as we have good business plans and we have the rest of it to go along with it. But at this point in time, the board sees this as a valuable piece of property. We don't intend to sell the property, and we would retain control of the property with this contract with the Boys and Girls Club. And they would pay all cost for the building. Thank you.
Yeah, now I'll give you all these secondhand tickets.
Wardrobe malfunction.
Yeah. Just get a wardrobe malfunction.
Is duct tape has a thousand.
I'll have you know that the ladies have posted meetings or meetings because I chose this duct tape. It is their third table. I'm going to repeat the question. Sorry. Lakota is always saying that there is not enough money to do all they want to do. When the last levy was passed, it was promised it would be used for the students' needs. Now they want to spend $500,000 to tear down the Union School when over a million was recently spent on rehabbing it, plus against historical meaning. Do you agree with this? And if so, how does this benefit Lakota school children?
The first part of that question was, is that when the levy was passed, they talked about investing that into our next generation of leaders. And I really work from a philosophy of, if you give your word, you keep your word. And so if this community came together to pass that levy, to reinvest it in these kids, then that's where the money needs to go. And in my earlier conversations, I talked to reaching out to the business community or reaching out to universities and repurposing that property if necessary. But that's what we have to do as a school district is not necessarily saying, hey, we made the wrong decision, now we need to go spend more money. We need to take a step back and say, what are other opportunities and ideas that we can actually do? But when it comes to the money that the community passed for the levy, we have to go and look at the cost. We have to be really fiscally responsible because if you look at the budget for Lakota school districts, and I would encourage everybody to go out and look at the budget, between 2012 and 2014, costs were going down. From 2015 to 2019, projected costs are going up. So the question is, is how do we fiscally sound between 2012 and 2014? And then go to fiscal management from 2015 all the way up to 2019. So this is, school district has the money, yes it does, but we need to be fiscal stewards in the way that we manage those funds, the way that we allocate those funds, and the way that we repurpose property. Now, it's great the fact that we will retain that property, but the question is, is that what happens if we were to sell that property? What happens if we was to lease that property? Is there financial benefit for the school district in looking at some of those other options? And that's the challenge that we have, is that as a member of the board, I'm looking at all options, business options, partnerships with universities, having Cincinnati State Company potentially use that property. We have to think differently, other than the conventional thinking. Thank you.
I've actually taken three questions that touch on the same subject and kind of picked the one that probably sums up the other two. And we'll start with you, Mr. Tran. Religious freedom and diversity have always been hallmarks of a free society. How do you define religious freedom? And in your opinion, what is the role of Lakota in accommodating those freedoms?
Let me think about this one minute. I believe that everybody have a right to choose what they believe in, whether they believe in God, or if they don't believe in God, or whatever else. In the school system, the question is, do we support that? For example, in Mason, where there's a group of Muslim students who want to observe a certain holiday or certain tradition that the Muslim religion requires. If it happened at this school, as a school board member, the question is, how are we going to do this correctly and not infringe on anybody's right to believe? But at the same time, it's not going to infringe on any other students as a whole. So for me to answer that question is, in general, it's going to be very difficult. So I'd rather say this, if there's a case arise and we have to deal with that, then we will do it based upon the law of the land and based upon what is right for the school district, what is right for our parents, and what is right for the students. Thank you.
I believe in the separation of church and state. And I believe that religion is an individual and personal choice. In the case of a minor, it's a family choice, a parent-child choice, and it shouldn't be forced on anyone in a school setting. However, I will not ever censor student-initiated prayer or expressions of worship. I do believe that religion is something that we need to have a freedom to worship regardless of any other outside factors. It's how we choose.
As a diversity practitioner, I think that every student, every parent, every community member should be allowed to bring their true authentic self to school. Now, I do agree with what Levins said, that there needs to be a separation between church and state. But I think in the same token is, is that people should have the opportunity to celebrate their own personal authenticity. But I think in the celebration of that authenticity, you have to respect the people that actually are around you. So if my religion means that I come to school with a head wrap, or if my religion means that I come to school with a long dress, then that should be celebrated because that's you bringing your true authentic self to work, right? Because we're educators, we want that expression, we want people to learn. And if you take a minute and look around this room, there's diversity here now. You know, there's young, there's old, there's white, there's black, there's Baptist, there's Catholic, there's Muslim. We're actually practicing diversity right now. And nobody's around us, so we're all getting along. You know, and so you have to realize that every student should have that ability to bring their authentic selves to work. But we do have to put in this controls around that to make sure that even though you are celebrating who you are, that you're respectful of other people. And as a board member, that's what we need to have discussions around. How do we celebrate each other? You know, how do we allow ourselves to bring our true authentic selves to work? What does that actually mean? You know, if we are going to celebrate religion, then we need to celebrate everybody's religion. If we have a religious picnic, we need to celebrate everyone. If we have a religious event, we need to, everybody has to have the time to express themselves. And I think that it's the responsibility of the board to create and open those dialogues and conversations with every community within the Lakota school district because we are a very diverse and growing community, and we all need to celebrate each other.
I would agree with the other candidates here on the stage. The First Amendment's fairly clear on this issue as far as imposing our religion on others within the school. However, I think there is a great opportunity to celebrate the diversity of the district. And I think that's what makes this the great district that it is. I love that my children go to school with people of different beliefs, and they understand those beliefs of those students that they go to school with, and it helps educate them. I think it's part of creating a rich culture to understand different people's religion, different people's perspective, allowing those people to express their religion while still not imposing their religion on others. One of the best musical programs I've been to at Lakota was put on where there was a celebration of all different religions. And it was, the music was rich, all of the different cultures that were represented and allowing people to express their own views. And we've increased that opportunity for our students to have different diversity activities and cultural activities as after-school programs in the evening and summary of the day so people can learn from each other and move forward as we all have to live together in this diverse society.
Thank you. Just to show you how open and honest we are, so you don't think I'm palming cards. We actually have three questions that pertain to our superintendent, questions that related to performance and contracts. And I really don't particularly think it's fair, especially since we have two sitting board members who will have to be deciding that somewhat in the future. And given the fact that our superintendent is seated in the bow heading this evening. But I will tell you, this is not a school board meeting. So afterwards, when our candidates are available, you are welcome to bend your ear all you like. So I'm going to stick those right there. This is a softball question, and we'll start with Lynn, enlighten things up here. Should homeschoolers be welcome to participate in sports? Yes.
Yes.
Wasn't a trick question.
It was way too easy. Yes, in fact, we're required to allow them to participate, but I think they should anyway. And they also absolutely believe it's school choice and think it's terrific if parents make that decision for their child.
Yeah. And in actuality, I agree with her. I mean, as long as they're, you know, mainly students will do it, as long as they're participating and doing what's necessary under the school policy, they should have full access. But if you really think about it, is that if you look back to your previous question when we talked about being an inclusive community, you know, and that's part of that diversity too, because it's diversity in thought, diversity in action, diversity in behavior. Because we talked about religion, well, people who homeschool their children have made a different choice. And so that choice should be given the same access and the same resources that we have here in Lakota.
I don't think you're going to see District Mayor. We'll see. But I also agree that you should allow access to the athletic programs and additional programs. We have homeschoolers or taxpayers, and they should have access to those programs if that's what their children choose to do.
By all means, yes. As long as the students, when you talk about homeschool students, are well educated at home, not, what I'm trying to say is, not using athletic ways of doing things to not pay attention to school workers. So if the students have followed all the rules and obey all the rules of the school protocol, I don't see a problem with that at all.
We're closing in on the hour mark, and so I will make this our last question that we begin with. How important is local control of our schools? How would you protect it? And will you lobby for more local control in Columbus?
I would say that local control is extremely important because if you really think about it, who knows your children better than you? You know, does your neighbor know your children better or a person down the street? I think that local control is extremely important. And as a board member, I will actively lobby to ensure that the control stays local because how can someone who's in Columbus who's never been inside a Lakota school building know what their children need or interact with a teacher or see what they see from their eyes? And I think that's part of the challenge that, to be quite honest, that Julie had that to face and being existing board members, is ensuring that control stays local. But more importantly than that, not only does the control need to stay local, but that control needs to also be shared with the community. So it's not just about what the board thinks, it's about what the community thinks because the community elects the board. And so for me, the board is accountable to the community. And so what I would like to do is, say, the local control, I think part of that needs to go back to the community. And I think between the board and the community, there's been a disconnect. And I think that in order to make this district stronger, is that there needs to be better relationships established between the community and the board in co-managing that local control. Because your parents are going to be your biggest advocates. They're the ones who are going to champion the cause. They're the ones who are not going to get paid to show up to the football games. They're the ones that are going to be in the booster clubs. You know, they're on the front lines on behalf of this community. And so they need to have a voice. Not only their voice, but they need to have representation when decisions are actually made. So I think the board needs to work a little bit harder to share that local control.
I too believe that local control is critically important. The current board and administration has been very active in Columbus and lobbying for that. I think sometimes what happens in Columbus is a pendulum swings too far one way. There's a lot of dictates that come down, and I believe that's what's happened recently. I believe that we're in the process of working towards coming back to understand the local control is important. The primary investors in our school are the local taxpayers. 62% of our budget is the local taxpayers' dollars. And then the state budget is also just our dollars that are fun through Columbus. So it's critically important that our community have a say in how those dollars are spent and what we implement in our schools. And we've made a great deal of effort to reach out to our community with over 100 community conversations to make sure that our local voices have been heard. And we've actually asked those community members to advocate and to work with Columbus. They've heard tremendous number of phone calls and emails and voices from our local constituents in telling them that we need more local control and to make a change here locally.
Julie, how do you argue against local control? You can't. The reason why is that each individual district is different. The reason why is that each individual district is different. Our school district is different from Hamilton, Cincinnati school district. If you get someone from somewhere, sit up in the cloud, dictated, everybody should be doing the same, you will not get the same result. So I strongly believe that local control, we need to take back the local control to make sure that the people in the district have the right to make a decision. You look, for example, Columbus, they already put down a lot of unfunded mandates, right? And we try to fight again those unfunded mandates. Now look at that. I don't think those people up there have thought very carefully how much cost associated with that, whether it's money or human resources. So sometimes, when things are centralized, it's going to be very difficult to make things happen individually. Just like I talked before earlier about the classroom, about the students. The teachers in the classroom know about those students. It's going to be very difficult for someone to sit somewhere and know about those individual students and help them to make them successful in life. So I strongly believe, we talked about global, bring back the control back to the teachers. Give them the ability to teach instead of managing the kid and managing the student. Let them teach the student, let them inspire the student. So these students, whatever the interest they have, let the teacher bring them out for them. So those are the things that I think are of key importance. So of course, I'm against, I'm for the local control.
These are the community schools, and you should have a voice in your schools. And that's why you elect representatives and your locally elected school board members. If we're not representing you well, you'll let us know. As Julie has said, Lakota has made a tremendous effort to reach out and connect with the community and hear what the community wants in our schools. Over 100 community conversations, it's an ongoing process that will continue because we really appreciate and value the community's voice at the decision-making table. I have to be perfectly honest, I am very concerned about the state of local control in the state of Ohio. A recent decision to replace the locally elected Youngstown School Board with an appointed school board is very concerning to me. And I know that it's in the courts at this point, but I'm very concerned because that legislation that was passed is applicable to all school districts, and it's a concern. I appreciate the question. I absolutely advocate already at the state level, the local control, and will continue to do so.
This will be the one-minute closing statement for each candidate calling your board. We'll start with Julie, Tom, and then Ernest for your closing statements.
I moved from a great public school to a school that offered very few resources and very few opportunities. From that point forward, my parents had the resources to allow me to go to a private school. But I believe that public schools are an asset to every community because they allow us to invest our views and allow them to become independent, contributing citizens into the future. And I think that's critical. I look at every decision I make to make sure that these students are going to be successful and be able to stand up with their own two feet when they graduate, do what they need to do in industry. And I will continue the work that we've done. I mentioned some things at the beginning, internships are another thing that we've implemented, and we'll continue to grow these opportunities so our students can be innovative and ready for the future.
What you see is what you get from it. I'm shoot straight. I tell you exactly what it is. I have no political agenda. I only want to serve one term. And those four years, the four things that I earlier mentioned to you are fiscal responsibility, bullying awareness, teachers retaining, good teachers, and get parents to be involved. Those are the four things I would like to accomplish for the next four years. Thank you.
As a district, our job is to prepare our students for their future, and I can say that we do it. I'm proud to say that I've been part of the restructuring of how we do business, of looking at priorities differently. And where there once seemed to be a mindset that levies were the answer to deficit spending and revenue shortfalls, I can say that we no longer look at levies as the first option. We changed the way we do business, we made difficult cuts, and we installed important cost containment strategies. I can say that barring unforeseen factors, I see no need for levy within the current five-year forecast. I can say that we're working diligently to provide an excellent return on your tax dollars while insisting on the opportunities that every student deserves to achieve to their fullest potential. And I can say that every dollar counts. It's been hard work, but Lakota has reached a strong level of financial organizational stability. It's unagreed to direct her to continue. I'd be delighted to stay after and talk with you further about that, but please reach out and contact us. I ask for your support on November 3rd. Thank you.
Lakota is a growing community. A lot of companies and a lot of individuals have moved into this community, take the time to look at Lakota, take the time to look at Mason, and take the time to look at some other communities. We need to be a school community of choice for the greater Cincinnati area. We need to look at establishing more business partnerships. We need to partner with GE, we need to partner with Procter &amp; Gamble, we need to create pipelines where they want our talent. And we really need to create those university partnerships. I've created partnerships with UC, I've created partnerships with Cincinnati State. And as I'm looking at the five-year forecast, I see our costs increasing and I see our revenue decreasing. And when I look at the five-year projections, by 2019, every family got a deficit. But each of you can go out there and look for yourself. But I think that what we need to do as a community is put fiscal controls in place. I think we need to be innovative, and I think we need to be forward-thinking, partner with Fortune 500 companies, partner with universities, to invest in the Lakota community. And as a board member, that's what I would be doing.
To the public at large, and maybe some of these questions that didn't get answered, they can have your ear after the meeting. And while we're getting reset for the trustees, Ann Becker with the Cincinnati Tea Party is going to briefly discuss the three issues that are on ballot besides the candidate issues.